Work study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Welcome to City of Glendale Council Workshop Session of October 10th, 2023. This meeting is called to order. All members are present and accounted for, so we will not do roll call. If we could, we're going to go ahead and begin with item number one. We are going to hold item number three from today's agenda and plan for this item to be presented in October 24th workshop. With that, if we could go ahead and Ms. Power, if you'd introduce item one, please.
Cemetery rate discussion.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide the staff report on item number one today will be led jointly by Michelle Witinkle, Director of Field Operations. She'll be joined by Charles Thomas, our Deputy Field Operations Director.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up to our August 8th presentation where we went through many things with the cemetery. We covered the background of the cemetery, its history, recent improvements we've done, and part of it was the last rate increase we did there was in 2009. So just brief background on it, we've, the cemetery's existed since 1900. It's approximately 21 acres, and the intent of our rates are to cover our costs at the cemetery. The intent of this presentation is to respond to those questions that were raised in that August 8th presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is the same chart that we showed to you in our prior presentation. This chart highlights the fact that, on average, our under-recovered operating expenses are roughly $49,000 annually. Collectively, we're under-recovered around $100,000 total in that eight-year period. If we didn't have the 2021 and 2022 years factored into that, we would be under-recovered This chart we showed you, because there's so many different combinations of services that are available at the cemetery, we wanted to just give you kind of the methodology on how we came up with those rates. Instead, we wanted to explain that for each service we provide, there was a time study conducted, and based on that time study, we took the operating expenses for that service and divided it across the time study for each service. And that's how we came up with the rates. One of the questions that was previously asked was, how does our current rate compare to our proposed rate? The combination of purchases and services, this combination of purchases and services were selected because this is one of our most common. And so if we go down the line, our current cost, our current rates, excuse me, for a single adult grave in a grass area is about $1,624. Our proposed rate would go up to $2355. Opening and closing is currently $1320. We would be going up to just under $2,000 there. A grave box is $1,200. This one in particular would actually go down to $976.50. This is one of those items that you saw in the last one where we're doing 55% above our market rate, and currently the market rate is lower than what it was when we were from 2009. Marker is similar. If we end up doing any contract negotiations or anything like that and prices come down, we would charge 55% above what we pay, and that's what happened there. Marker setting goes from $264 to $570. There's that administration fee that we talked about, and then the tax is charged on the materials that we purchase. So the grave box and the markers are the things that are taxed, and that is the increase of about $1,800 from the current rate to the proposed rate. In total, that's about a 35% increase across that total service that's shown up on the screen. Another question that was asked is, how do we compare to local privately-owned cemeteries? And Ms. Witinkle will walk you through that on the next chart.
Thank you, Charles. So what Charles just showed you was with our, so this is the proposed rates from the prior slide, and what we did is we took an actual service. So this is, it's not the maximum you could spend, but it's pretty typical, and these are the things that would be included. And what we were able to do was provide a comparison, the city of Mesa rates, because Mesa, Tempe, and there's one other municipality, Buckeye, that have a cemetery, but we were asked if we could find local rates. So this comparison is actually a cemetery that's within feet of our cemetery without using their name. We were able to get numbers from them, as well as unfortunately, we did have a colleague whose father passed away recently, and his mother's buried there, so we were able to get their numbers as well. There are certain things that don't go line to line, and so I'm going to walk through. So the single grave adult is one of our most common ones. We used their lowest price plot, so the asterisk down below, they gave us pricing from $4,400 to $9,900. We don't know how to compare and what would fit to ours, so we used their low one as kind of a comparison for us. Opening and closing costs, ours are $1,995 proposed, and theirs would be $2145. Our grave box, $976. They do not provide grave boxes. They gave us pricing for a dome, which is a lower cost than a grave box. Marker, we used what we thought was a comparable marker. Theirs was $795. Our $643. Our marker setting fee is shown, and we're proposing a new administration fee. They have one, it's $595. The taxes showing is the taxable amount, so it's the grave box and marker, and you can see the difference between the two of them there is $3,153, or approximately 44% higher than ours. So even with our proposed new rates, our rates are a significant value. We are proposing the rates based upon our actual cost of service and covering our cost. The other question asked, and we don't have a slide on this, was, were there other sources that we could find for improvements? Was there bond authority? We did check with Budget and Finance. There is no, it appears that there is no current CIP bond capacity in the bond language that would allow for improvements here. We're still going to look, and we will come back with something in the proposed budget. This concludes our formal presentation. We do have a bunch of slides following. So for example, this one shows all our graves. It shows our current fees for residents, our current fees for non-residents, and then the proposed fee for residents and non-residents. We did provide you with all this detail and made sure it was made public, such that if anybody had any questions on it or wasn't aware, we could answer those. But as it did say, this does conclude our formal presentation. These slides are here, so if you have any specific questions on these, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mayor. You lost me a little bit when you just said something about the budget, the last part that you, I got confused there. Can you go through that again?
Yes. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachov, one of the questions asked in our last presentation was, could we potentially find other funding sources for the columbariums or improvements like that? Because they were, they are currently proposed in the CIP in approximately fiscal year 28. Don't quote me on that, it may be '27, but they're not next year. And the question was asked, could we potentially find other funding sources and pull them forward? Could we look at other bond categories, maybe cultural or open space? We did ask that question, and the cemetery does not fit in the current voter-approved language for any of those categories, but we're going to continue to look for other funding sources, and we will propose where, in this upcoming budget, where the columbariums make sense in terms of, I'm not sure we can do them next year because we're not sure the fence will be done, and the fence has to be done before we do them, so there's a timing issue. So that was the intent of that comment.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Witinkle. Mayor, if I could continue, so I guess what I want to understand is, the proposed rates, so the projected shortfall for 2023 is 62,000 about, and that's for our operating, all of our costs, operating costs. So will these proposed rates, basically, the difference, the total difference is 183443 for the, if you go, you know, all the way down the column and you take the current rate and the proposed rate. So that would take 34 burials at that price to close the funding gap. Is that, do we, what kind of activity, because I don't see a slide telling us, like, we only, we can only, we only offer burials there as of right now, right? We don't have a columbarium.
Mr. Thomas is going to answer part of the question. We do still have some niche space available for cremations. There still is some space there. There's space for other cremation, cremation spots on the ground. So we still have spaces available, and our proposed rates are based upon a typical number of burials we do per year, and our intent was to cover our costs with them. I think he's nodding because he remembers the exact number of burials we do per year. Is that right?
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Tomachov, your math is correct. When we put the rate plan together, it was based on an average amount of burials pre-COVID, and that number was 35. So 35 transactions per year would get us to close that gap. And yes, we call it niche or columbarium. We have a small columbarium to the front of the site, and right now we have about 13 spots available left in that small columbarium at the front of the, at the front of the site.
So one more question, Mayor. Do you anticipate that we're going to, demand's going to exceed our availability? Are you starting to see a shift of less burials? I think that was what part of the conversation was, is that, you know, obviously, we're not going to be able to close the gap if people are like, we, more and more people are being cremated, and we only have 13 spots left, and we need 35 regular burials in order to close the gap, but if people really prefer the columbarium and we don't have it to offer, then we're going to fail in closing the gap of general fund support for the cemetery. So.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Tomachov, what we're seeing, we are seeing the trend go towards cremations and slowly move towards columbariums. What we're getting currently is ground-buried cremations currently. So folks are still liking to have that spot to go sit and visit in the grass, and so we're still getting quite a few cremations, but they're cremations buried. So that 13 available niche space, that 13 available spaces has been available for the last year and a half or so, and so we didn't want to rush doing construction at the cemetery, adding a new columbarium before we started to see the trend of the cremation burial slow down and moved more towards columbariums. And then, as Ms. Witinkle mentioned, we wanted to put the fence up around the cemetery to secure the site, so we don't get vandalism at the new columbarium.
I agree with that, Mayor. That made me think of one more question, though. The ground burial for cremation, is that, is that charged at a different rate than, is that? Which one of these slides is burial? I don't know, I don't know the terminology, so.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachov, if you just keep going, Slide 8 has rates for cremains, and there is there the different spaces we offer. A single grave companion, Mr. Thomas just spoke to the premium grass area, so there's the current rates and proposed rates for those.
Okay, just, I'd just like to say, at least for me, I would like to see, I would like us to be able to, and obviously, there's a, there's a much less, a smaller spread, I guess is the way to say it, between what the current rates and what we're adjusting rates to cremains. I didn't know that was the term, so thank you for teaching me that. There's a smaller spread between that and what we're doing for burial. Are you seeing a decrease in number of actual regular burials? I know we had, we had, we had a lot more during, and you had the asterisk there for 2021 and 2022, but is it starting to slow down? Because for me, I'd like to see the cemetery be basically an enterprise fund, self-sustaining, that we, we make our rates so that we can cover the costs, even if we have to do, if we don't have any bond category for it, that we can figure out a way to have the rates cover that, too.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Tomachov, it's about, it's about an even split. We do still have quite a few normal burials. The rate spread is a little bit different because it's less labor-intensive for a cremain burial versus using a backhoe and such for a full burial and a grave box. So that's the difference between the two, but we're still seeing quite a few regular burials in addition to the trend ticking up on the cremain burials.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just a question here. The single grave, that's the actual site, the land right, what, what causes, we own the property, so what causes the increase for cost?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Adama, the rate that is full for the, for the adult single lot or any lot includes caring for the lot in perpetuity. So that means cutting the grass, watering it, seeding it, picking up the trash in that area. So if you, essentially, if you were to divide that across the entire site, it would be purchasing intermittent rights, giving the customer rights to use that spot for burial, plus care for, until perpetuity, at which the perpetual care fund would be our care funding at that point, once the cemetery's closed.
Okay, thank you for that. I did not know that. I was just wondering, if we own the property, why does it increase? But shouldn't that be on a separate line item, maintenance and? I don't know if it changes the dollar amount, but I mean, it's just, I would not have known that had I not asked. But let me just go to another question. For that single, do we not do double where one is on top of the other, or is it just side by side now?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachov, or Councilmember Adama, if you look at the slide I've got up, which is number seven, the adult singles, the first one, the adult companion is the second one, and that does show where you've got two in one lot, and you see each of them has an adult oval, adult oval companion. So the companion is that second, where you provide two, so it's a deeper burial for the first.
It's deeper, right. But there's no additional cost for the upkeep because it's, the top is already being upkept.
That's correct.
That's not included. Okay, and then a similar question, Councilmember Tomachov, I see 2021 and 22. Did, actually, I see asterisks in 21 and 22. Were there a lot of burial increases because of COVID in 21, probably more than 20?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Adama, I can't specifically say that it was due to COVID, but certainly it was surrounding the pandemic. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Councilmember Adama and Tomachov covered my question. Any other questions? I think this is for discussion only today.
That's correct, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Power.
Council item of special interest, review current number of certified paramedics.
Mayor, members of the council, staff report will be done by Glendale Fire Chief Brian Freiberg.
Mayor, members of council, in front of you is a city council report with a purpose and a recommendation in response to the August 22nd, 2023, at the city council meeting, when Mayor Wires requested if the current number of certified paramedics working for the City of Glendale Fire Department is appropriate to meet the current staffing model demands deployed by the fire department, and review all options for meeting identified shortages without additional shortages to staffing. Today is, I provided a memo of a scope of work for your review to look for either direction or approval on that scope of work for the council item of special interest.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I see under the category of timeline that the department estimates between eight to 16 hours of staff time. Typically, we, I think we see a dollar amount attached to that when these, I'm not going to quibble over the dollar amount because I do think this is important information for the council to have. So I was just wondering if you had a dollar estimate. If you don't, not a big deal to me, but I was just curious.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner, the 18 to 16 hours would be assigned to different members of my staff at either their salary rate or their hourly rate, depending on the work that was being assigned out.
Would it be fair to say then it's between $800 and $1,600, or?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner, I would rather go back and drive down to actually what that is than to speculate.
Okay. Again, I'm just used to seeing it, I think, but again, to me, it's just important information for us to have, and we're not, but I'm glad to, I think I'm glad to see that we're not doing a $100,000 consultant contract on this, that you're comfortable, we have the talent in-house to be able to come up with the information council needs.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner, absolutely, this would be assigned to my office and then either to our assistant chiefs or our deputy chiefs that traditionally put this work together. This would be in-house work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've already had this conversation with Chief Freiberg, but I would like to say that I was honestly a little surprised that this came forward. I was, the first I heard about this was, I was like, council item of special interest on August 22nd, when we were literally six weeks into the budget year, and I thought, maybe I missed something in the budget presentation that the fire chief did, so I went back and watched that, and this was never mentioned. And my point is, is that this, this type of thing, information needs for our public safety should not be, information shouldn't just be shared with one person. This should have been something that we were all informed about at the exact same time, either by memo or however you wanted to do it, but that only one person knew about the staffing need from our fire department and brought it forward as a council item of special interest is not really the way we're supposed to be doing things. I was honestly surprised because I hadn't heard anything about it until it was brought forward as a council item of special interest. So, thank you.
Mayor. I, too, met with Chief twice, so Chief, thank you for allowing me two visits. I appreciate it. I know, I think I'm only allowed one, so. Chief, in our, we had some lengthy conversations, the most recent one longer than the other. First of all, I want to thank you for the fortitude of your thought process on the fire department since you've been on. You've been able to address a lot of things. What I learned was that you've been working on this, on paramedics, for some time now. It's just been brought out earlier, but I commend you for, for understanding and knowing that there's a need to address overtime, but more importantly, how many paramedics we have. In our conversation, I asked you a question. Do, do we have, are we still meeting our needs? And you said absolutely yes, but there's overtime that we're, that we're having to pay out. And then there's also, I had, I asked you, is there, does that cause issues with firefighters? It's kind of burned out, and you said, yeah, absolutely. But again, with those questions and what you answered was, I'm just glad to know that you were already working on this. This is something you planned, it just happens to be now in the middle of the year after the budget, but I commend you and thank you for thinking about those issues that firefighters think about every day and, but I'm also glad, at the same token, that, that our standards are still as such, and we're still meeting the needs of our citizens, and response times aren't where they should be. Thank you.
All right, what's the next step?
Mayor, members of council, if you look through the scoping statement specifically down to the deliverables, it would be assigning those 18, 8 to 16 hours to identify if there is a staffing gap in the current number of certified paramedics. That creates a reliance on overtime to constantly staff paramedic seat assignments and identify why the staffing gap is occurring. If there is a staffing gap, develop recommendations to address the gap, limiting the recurrence of the reason for the gap. And to bring that back in a recommendation of options for you to review. So today is looking for approval of the scope of work to bring back recommendations and options for your review.
All right, we have a consensus for that. Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
You. All right. Next item.
Glendale city code revisions.
Mayor, members of council, here to provide the final staff report for item number four today will be led by Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here to present the item today is Tim Bowling, our code official. We'll be talking about some revisions to the code that we feel are necessary. There's some codes that duplicate each other that are unnecessary, and then some additions that we would like to talk about and get some direction from you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowling.
Thank you, Rick. Today, we have several code changes. Some are edits to comply with Arizona Revised Statute, and some of them are new codes that will allow code compliance to be more effective. And we'll be seeking consensus. We have several different codes, and we'll seek consensus at the end of each one. So the first one, ARS 9-500 requires cities to adopt codes that restrict parking on vacant lots. It's to control dust, and we have a code right now, 2465B, and it has, it got added, included, but not limited to semi-tractors, trailers, and limousines a few years ago, several years ago, and that kind of clouded it up so that the language really means that you cannot park any vehicle on a residential property at all. So if we take that part out, that's lined out, and then add it to the end, no semi-tractor, trailer, or limousine be parked on a property in a residentially zoned district. That cleans that language up and allows us to be more effective in our enforcement. So with that one, do we have a consensus to make that change?
Any questions?
Of course I, would that include, like, I mean, limousines could be like 15-passenger va, I mean, there's different types of limousines. So what exactly does, does, I mean, I don't know if that is, might be a little loose, how are we going to interpret that, I guess, is what I want to know.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov, that was added at the council request about eight years ago. It was specifically to limousines, and it, and my understanding was that it was added to address a specific case where there was a resident that had several limousines at their residential property. And I don't believe we, we don't have a definition of limousines, but it would be, you know, a vehicle used to transport other individuals.
Which could be, Mayor, if I could, it could be a lot of other things besides a, I mean, you know, there's all different kinds of limousines, so that's why I'm just a little curious if we should be a little more specific there, where somebody says, well, this isn't a limousine, this is a, whatever, whatever they want to call it.
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, we can look into maybe creating a definition that may be more helpful for us. We'd be happy to do that and bring that back to council as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Consensus?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
And this is just supporting code that we have that already talks about, that complies with ARS, that restricts parking on vacant lots. So the next code is that, right now, our code says, "Any vehicles shall be parked, stored, or maneuvered on a dustproof surface." But if we change that to visible vehicles, then that makes it more clear that it's wherever you can see the vehicles. We don't want to imply that any parking in the rear yard that's not visible must be on a dustproof surface. And whatever is surrounded by a six-foot fence, code inspectors cannot see, so we won't be able to enforce that. This clarifies that a little bit more. And then the second part is that we did pass an ordinance, 2468, that requires, if you have crushed granite for your parking surface, that the parking surface granite must be different color. that requires, if you have crushed granite for your parking surface, that the, the parking surface granite must be different color than the landscaped area in the front yard, that's created some hardships for folks, mostly up in Granada states, and this is just a couple of pictures of examples where the granite is the same material or the same type as what's, same color as what's in the, in the landscaped area, but it has a border around it. The border is really what separates the parking area from the landscaped area, and that part of it has been easy to enforce, and that one kind of makes sense. So, for this one, do we have consensus to make this change in the city code?
Question?
I just say a common question on the visible, adding the visible, if you have a large backyard, you have a backyard gate that you get into, and it is a dirt backyard, and you come and go a lot out of that backyard with whether, whatever vehicles you're using, and it's creating dust, how does that not also cause a problem with the dust issue that you mentioned in the prior one?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Malnar, if that rear yard was dirt and was surrounded by a six-foot fence, we wouldn't be able to see it, we wouldn't be able to enforce it, so I don't know what would we enforce even if they were driving out of the dirt backyard?
Well, if you had a complaint, excuse me, Mayor, if I may, if you had a complaint about, from the neighbors saying that these vehicles are causing dust, coming in and going all the time, so are you telling us that there would be nothing we could do?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Malnar, that would probably get referred to Maricopa County Dust Control.
Okay, so there is some enforcement on that if needed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for you, you've said now twice a six-foot fence, but what if it's a chain link fence, and you can see through it?
Mayor, members of the council, if there is a chain link fence that you can see through, and we're invited by the next door neighbor to come into their backyard, we could go into their backyard and look through a chain link fence.
Okay, no, I'm talking about the front gate for them to go from the front to the backyard on that person's property that's a chain link fence that you can see through.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, our code states that any violation that is visible to a person standing at ground level beyond the boundaries of the property, so if we could stand at the sidewalk and look through a chain link fence, then we could address what we could see through that chain link fence.
Okay, I wonder, I wonder if it would require any type of language to state that, you know, cannot be visible through a six-foot fence, so people would know to cover their fence, if that's what they're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, yeah, I mean, we can look at, you're looking for maybe to be more specific to indicate front and side yard as opposed to just be invisible?
Well, I think, yeah, I'm just, I'm looking, you know, the, the one thing about legislating anything is the unintended consequences, we, we think we fixed something and we don't, or somebody says, well, you, but did you mean this for this, it could be a simple wrought iron fence with, with gaps in between, if it's still a six-foot or seven-foot high fence, you can see through it, then the six-foot makes no difference, it's whether it's visible through the fence or not, correct?
Correct.
So I, I wonder if maybe that shouldn't be added to that, just, just for clarification, maybe if we're doing it, why, why not do it the first time and be done with it?
Okay, so Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand, so you're concerned about just addressing parking on a dustproof surface in the front and side yard, and so instead of saying visible, we would say vehicles parked in the front or side yard must be on a dustproof surface? Instead of saying all visible vehicles?
Again, I, I think we're making this more complicated than it has to be. You, you've said a couple of times, six-foot fence, but we didn't say whether it was visible through the six-foot fence. I'm just trying to, should we clarify the, the height of the fence isn't relevant if you can see through it?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct, we, we don't have six-foot fence in here, I, I use that because that's typically the standard fence height that we see in residential neighborhoods. But, yeah, you're right, it could be any height.
Yeah, I, all I'm trying to do is just figure out is, would it be easy to add this before we turn this into an ordinance, to fix it first? Just, just to add that little bit of, I mean, is there a way to do that?
Mayor, I, I think what Mr. Bowling's trying to say is it's not necessary to add, so all visible vehicles, whether they're parked behind a chain link fence or parked in the front yard, have to be on a dustproof, dustproof surface, that's.
I understand, but this, the stuff that always comes back, it always does, you know, all right, well, that's fine, if you guys don't think you'll have an issue with it, then I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, members of council, do we have a consensus to move forward on this one?
Any other questions? Okay, you do have a consensus.
Okay, and the next one is just to re, delete a redundant code, chapter twenty-four sixty-eight, E one, two, three, four, and seven, address pretty much anything that number nine has in here, so we're just asking to delete number nine.
Questions? No, consensus? We do have a consensus.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, the next one, this is to clean up language so that we comply with state statute again, right now, ARS nine dash four ninety-nine is the abatement clause, it gives us the authority for a clean and lean program. The state statute says that we have to notify the owner of the property and give them a minimum of thirty days, our city code says maximum of thirty days, so we just need to change that maximum to minimum, so that we comply with state statute.
Questions?
Question, because Phoenix, City Phoenix went through quite a bit with the zone, the homeless camp area, so do, what happens here if we, if your, our team finds a camp, makeshift camp out of any type of building material or cardboard, do we, do we take that down, do, is there any steps that we have to follow that the state asks us to?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama, in those situations, and we, we have had several, we work closely with the police department to clear the area, and we do notify the owner that the debris and whatever else is there needs to be removed and cleaned up, and we give them the minimum thirty-day notice.
And if it's in our public property, we can remove it legally?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Aldama, yes, we can, what we do is we hire a contractor, contractor goes out, removes it, sends us a bill, we pay the bill after, and then we send the bill to the owner, if the owner doesn't pay it, then we, we file a lien on the property.
Now, what some people don't understand, and if you're homeless, you still have the same rights that I have as a person who's housed, a hundred percent. So again, if somebody has something in, in, in a public alley, a large port, if you will, we can take that down, and, I mean, I'm sure, I know that we go through steps to make sure no one's in it before we do it, we're not getting, getting to any issues with the state or the federal government on doing that.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, to your point, Phoenix recently addressed this in their city, and there was a ruling by a judge, and I believe it was their city court, I looked at Mr. Bailey and make sure I'm saying that correctly, but the ruling essentially said you had to post a notice that the city had an intent to clean that encampment, and that notice had to be posted for a minimum, I believe, forty-eight hours. And then the city could go out, clean the encampment, dispose of anything that was obvious garbage, but then they had to maintain possession of anything that was an item of value and store that item of value, they had to post where the stored items would be located, so that anybody wanting to retrieve their property could make contact and get their property back for a minimum of thirty days, and then the holder of that property after thirty days could dispose of the property as they chose. We wrote a contract with Kowalski Construction, brought that to council, I think, six or seven months ago now, outlining that process, and they performed that work for us as a city. So we'll post the notice through our misdemeanor repeat offender program squad, we'll, we'll contact Kowalski, they'll come out forty-eight hours later, clean the site, hold any property of value, take it to their location, at the end of thirty days, they dispose of it, they don't resell it, they don't try to make money on it, they just dispose of it. And that's all part of the contract that we've entered into with Kowalski that was approved by council, like I said, about seven months ago or so.
And that's the current practice that we have?
Correct, yes.
Thank you for that thorough explanation, I appreciate it. That was my question.
Right next.
Yeah, I, I just had a question about the language, so my understanding is the state requires that we give them a minimum of thirty days, is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that's a state mandate.
And currently, we have a maximum of thirty days, correct?
Correct.
So, I would propose, instead of saying a minimum of thirty days or less, that we simply say being a, being thirty days, period. Just allow them thirty days, because it really opens it up to allowing much more than thirty days, the state law requires a minimum of thirty, why don't we just, and we used to have a maximum of thirty, why don't we just say, okay, we will give them thirty days notice, period? And it's a little confusing when you say thirty days or less, when the or less doesn't apply anyway, if it's mandated thirty days.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, the or less stipulates that there's a public safety hazard and necessitates an earlier cleanup, so we wouldn't give someone thirty days if it was creating a public safety hazard.
Okay.
And the state law allows us to do that.
Okay.
But to your point, I understand, why not just say thirty days, remove minimum or maximum and just say thirty days?
Correct.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, yeah, we can, we can just put being a period of thirty days or less if the interest of, of public safety.
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, kind of put a point on why we believe minimum may want to be in there in speaking with the prosecutor's office, they like when city code is the exact language of state law. It, it really demonstrates that we're not doing anything outside the lines, so I, I think that's why the initial recommendation was to just mirror state law exactly, if that helps.
I, I, I appreciate that, I just, I don't, I, I would like to keep it at a maximum of thirty days, I, I don't want to see it going much beyond that, because I know they take a long time to begin with to get to that stage. And I, I know residents have really had an issue taking so long to take care of problems like this, if we keep adding more, and if we just say thirty days, then there's no way that the compliance officer or anybody else really should be issuing greater than thirty days, when it's getting, when it's already gotten to this point, where you've already issued, you know, the, the public nuisance notice.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, Councilman, that is our administrative practice, to give them thirty days, we don't typically give more than that on a regular basis.
So I guess my point is just say it that way.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I agree with Councilmember Malnar, I would just like to see it say thirty days, minimum implies that it could go a lot longer than thirty days, and I really don't want to create that impression that the minimum is thirty days, but if you go sixty or ninety, we'll, we'll accommodate that. So I do like the idea of just saying thirty days. My second question is, is, does this ordinance apply to the city as well when it's doing a, a clean and lean or cleaning up an encampment? Does the city have to abide by the thirty-day rule?
Mayor, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Clark, can you restate the question, I'm not sure I'm tracking?
Um, this is to apply to residents, right?
Correct.
Does it also apply to the city?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we, we, if we have something that needs to be cleaned up on city property, that's an immediate action typically. In the case of an encampment where there's property belonging to someone else that's unsheltered, then we have that forty-eight hour process that we follow, but we, we don't give ourselves thirty days to fix a problem.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted the answer to, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of things, by the time you get to the point of, of clean and lean, you've, a lot of other stuff has already transpired, so how, how many days have already transpired before you get to where you, because I know this is, that we've had to do this a couple of times in my district, and it's, it takes quite a while to even get to where the city's like, okay, you know, this is, this has become a nuisance, the property owner's not doing anything about it, so we're, we're, we're going to do it, about how much time has gone by before we get to this point, average?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomalchov, I'll give you a typical example, we receive a complaint on a property, we are there within forty-eight hours on ninety-two percent of our cases right now, we're working to get that number even higher. So we get there very quickly, and then there does take some research, because the state statute also requires that we notify the, the property owner and the last person that paid the taxes on that property, so we want to make sure that our notification goes out and that we have good notice, so that takes, you know, a couple of days, and then we mail it out, we give them thirty days, so we're at about thirty-five, thirty-six days at that point, if we come back on that thirty-sixth day and the property's in the same condition, then we bid it out to contractors, we bid it out so to make sure we get the most competitive price, that takes usually four or five days, and then, and then we hire the contractor to do the cleaning, and they'll usually do it within the same week, so you're looking at roughly forty-five to fifty days, best-case scenarios, everything runs through. And, you know, the biggest chunk of that is the state requirement of the thirty-day notice.
Uh, thank you for that, I know generally, at least in my experience, and maybe it's different in other parts of the city, but the couple that we've had to do in my district were bank-owned homes where they don't want to do anything, they just want to let it go through the process so they can get somebody to buy it and let that person take care of it. So, that's where you get, a, a lot of the time where you get an owner a short sale, I think the last one that I know, Mr. St. John assisted with, with code, was a short sale that was an escrow for an eternity, so, I mean, the, those kinds are, I, I think a lot of times that's what you end up with, is an owner that doesn't want to own the place anyway, they're trying to move it on to somebody else's plate to remedy all the issues, where there's a lot of time that goes by and it's, it's become a real nuisance in the neighborhood, so, I, I mean, nobody wants to wait another thirty days, but the last thing I wanted to ask was, I would prefer to get advice from our attorney on whether he feels like it's to the benefit of our code officers and the city to just mirror the state language, so that we don't have legal problems down the road from varying from what the state statute says, so, Mr. Bailey?
Mayor and council, from a general practice, that, yeah, mirroring the statute is a best practice, but understand, based on some of the comments that council members have made, is that that's a threshold, so if you want to meet the threshold, you want to go greater than, that can, from a safety perspective, in terms of, let's say, forty-five days, that's fine, but so long as you meet that minimum threshold is fine, so if, if, again, a best practice can be to mimic it, but if, if the council wants to be more directive in terms of when you want it prescriptively to occur, it must be at least thirty, and then pick a date, if that makes sense.
Well, I mean, thank you, I, I think it, I mean, it probably takes most of thirty days to actually get it done anyway, by the time you notify, do the RFP, give the contract, get somebody out there, I mean, you're still talking, you know, at least a couple of weeks minimum, if everything goes exactly right. So, I mean, I, I did have one question, do we have a, a policy from a non-responsive owner, we just, as long as we've, and I imagine we probably have to do certified and things like that, so that we can ver, we can have verification that we've sent a letter to Bank ABC and wherever, that, that if we have a non-responsive owner, we just move through the process anyway?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomalchov, we did sixty-eight clean and leans last fiscal year, we're on track to do about the same this year, and, and there, there are some, if ownership does change during that thirty-day process, which that happens, I believe that happened in the one up in your neighborhood you're referring to, that does delay us, because then we have to notify the new owner and give the new owner a minimum of thirty days. But for absentee owners or non-responsive owners, we go straight through the process, if they haven't. through the process. If they haven't replied to us, contacted us, and we've got good notice right after those thirty days are up, we go straight to clean and lean.
Okay. So, that, thank you. That, that was my point. I wanted to clarify is that it shouldn't take longer than thirty days, even if we get no response from the owner. We still move through the process even if we're not hearing back because I know that, especially in my experience with bank-owned and short sales where they don't want to invest any, any, any money into the property. They want to move it off their books onto somebody else's. They're not going to respond, but we still have an obligation to the, to get rid of the nuisance for the neighborhood.
And, and mayor, members of the council, councilmember Tomalchov, the public safety issue that's also referenced in this at the end, and it's also in the state statute, if we have an open vacant structure, we can consider that a public safety. Or if there's an accessible swimming pool in the backyard, maybe the gate's not latched. That is a imminent hazard that we need to address right away. And we'll do an emergency board up and we'll usually get that done like the next day.
And I've had that experience as well. You guys do a good job on that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I almost hesitate to say this. I'm, I'm not a licensed grammarian, but this really is just one big long run-on sentence. It's got two components to it. Punctuation and capitalization are free. I would like to suggest that you add a period after necessitate and capitalize the word so that the timeframe portion of this is one concept and then the recovery of the money is a separate one. But other than that, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Melner?
Thank you, mayor. I guess my concern is this. If this were to go to a hearing and a defendant says, well, the, the code says a minimum of thirty days, and judge, it's only been thirty-seven days, the hearing officer could very well say, oh, I agree. The code says, this is what the law says, a minimum of thirty days. It doesn't say a maximum. It says a minimum. And if we don't put that maximum in there, it gives the defendant the, the whole world to decide how to go forth with that. And so I believe we must put in the thirty days because otherwise it could get to sixty days and they could still convince the hearing officer, well, it says a minimum of thirty. It's only been sixty, judge. Let me have some more time. We need to avoid that.
Okay. So is there a consensus on Mr. Melner's idea of thirty days only?
Mayor, members of the council, just to make sure. So you want a minimum, maximum out, just the straight thirty days?
Okay.
Thank you.
Our attorney says either way, either way it works.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just, I have a question then. So because of what councilmember Melner just said, I mean, how does that prevent somebody from asking a judge for an extension? It still doesn't pre, and I, I don't see how that solves the problem. I just wanted to have somebody explain to me how taking the word minimum out, it solves it. You said if somebody goes to the hearing officer and they, and they say, I need a little more time, I need two more weeks, just because we took the word minimum out of there doesn't mean that they still can't be granted additional time, does it?
Mayor, may I answer that question?
Certainly.
Based on my reasoning, again, a hearing officer or a judge is going to look at the law. The law says a minimum of thirty days. So therefore, it could be more than thirty days. It could be sixty or ninety days. So if we cited them and said, okay, you have thirty days, but then, then the law says, well, that's just the minimum. The judge has an ability to then extend that. But if the law says absolutely thirty days, the, the judge or the hearing officer has no basis on which to, under the law. Now, the, a judge is always the law. The judge can always decide how they want to interpret the law. But if it says specifically thirty days and it's been thirty days, then as the judge is going to look at that, they're going to look at the law and say, what does the law say? But the law says thirty days. But if it says a minimum of thirty days, then the judge could say, well, that just means the minimum. I could have the leeway to give them more. But if it doesn't give him the leeway, then he is not likely to take or she to take that leeway. That's, that's my reasoning behind that. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor, members of the council, these don't go to hearing officers or city judges. It's the state statute and the city code. So we go through the process. We hire the contractor, clean the property. If they call us and ask for more time, it, it's up to us whether we give them more time and we generally don't. So it, it's not, they don't have a, a appeal process to a judge or a hearing officer. That's our, most of our other city codes, we write a citation and the citation goes before a hearing officer, but these don't. This is a straight clean and lean. And we're, we're not very lenient on, on giving more time.
To that point, I would just say then, this just ensures that you don't give them more time.
Mayor? Okay. You do have a consensus on it?
So straight thirty days.
Thirty-seven.
Thank you. So the next one is, we have some issues with alleys, and this is just a couple of examples. These are serviced alleys where they've had some illegal dumping. Illegal dumping is only going to be caught if somebody sees the person doing it and filming it and the police department responds or the police officers see it. Bulk trash collection is now, occurs on the streets. And so the alleys are left unattained. The city has a contract with a contractor to clean the alleys. These, the one on the left was a little over three thousand dollars. The one on the right costs thirty-eight hundred dollars for the city to pay that contractor to clean those up. Most cities have some level or some ordinance that requires property owners or whoever's responsible for that party to be responsible for half of the alley and half of the street and sidewalk in front of them. Currently, Glendale does not have an ordinance that requires property owners to be responsible for half of the alley. So using one of the codes from an adjacent city, this is a brand-new code that would require a property owner, responsible party to maintain the half of the sidewalk, alley, or street and keep it free from vegetation over six inches, tree shrub, impending pedestrian or vehicular traffic, other conditions that present a health, fire, or safety hazard, and then any area to be maintained pursuant to the section or the portion of the street that's open for public use between the curb line and the abutting property line and one-half the width of a budding alley from the property line to the center line of the alley.
Thank you, mayor. Let, let me understand this. So if my home is this home here and somebody illegally dumps that, that's going to be my responsibility to get rid of it?
Mayor, members of the council, councilman Aldama, that's correct.
So a lot of this stuff happens at night. It's just take away that there's no gates there. I have no control at two in the morning when somebody's out there. I don't even know it's out there because I don't look over the, the fence, right? Go to work every day. You go out the front door. You're not going out the back door unless you have reason to drive out of the back. Then all of a sudden, you come and I have a certain amount of time to get rid of this and it's a lot of money. I, it's a lot of money for the city too. But if you're not enforcing it and finding these guys dump, people dumping, if police isn't, through their enforcements, find these people and dump, it's just on me. That seems quite unfair because there's, and in, in indifferent parts of the city, specifically the one we're in now, has a lot of illegal dumping. It's why we have alleys that are being closed. So one thing is you'll probably get more alleys closed if this passes, but this is semi-unfair to, to family members who, to homeowners who have no way to enforce this or keep people from doing it. And in fact, if you talk to police officers, they'll probably tell you, don't approach these people. Just call the police. Sometimes it's too late. It's, it's, you call the police. You call the city and say, well, it's for you to pick up. Unless otherwise, I, I can't support this. I, I don't even know how we do this. And, you know, the other, the other way to do it is the city just goes out, but that's taxpayers' dollars as well. I'm, I'm kind of stuck here how that becomes responsibility of the homeowner if they have no control and we're not getting it through enforcement. So, I don't know. What are other cities doing?
Mayor, members of the council, councilman Aldama, the other cities enforce the maintenance of the alley and they have an ordinance that pretty much mirrors this. This ordinance was actually taken from one of the other cities. And it is enforced that you're responsible for half the alley. It's unfortunate when there's illegal dumping because in order to enforce illegal dumping, somebody has to see that dumping happen. And like you said, if it happens in the middle of the night, nobody's going to see it. It's unfortunate, but it's a responsibility of property ownership to maintain what's in front and what's behind and what goes on on the property, the area that you're responsible for.
So then our, so thank you for that. So a question, do we plan on increasing enforcement in alleys and in communities that have alleys to prevent this? Because I'm not sure that we just are cruising around looking for it. We find it after the fact. But a proactive measure, are we going, is this going to come along with the proactive measure to enforce?
Mayor, members of the council, councilman Aldama, for this particular violation, we are proactive going street by street, inspecting all the properties from the front. At this point, we would respond to these on a complaint basis only because it, because of the access issue.
Thank you, mayor. Who, who, is alley part of the city right-of-way? Because I, my understanding that these property lines end at the fence line. Because if you're saying that the, that the property owner's responsible and they don't, then they could say, well, I'm going to move my fence all the way out to wherever you say I'm responsible so nobody can dump anything on my property. Because I thought the, the fence line is the property line. So who's, what is, what is the ownership of the alleyway?
Mayor, members of the council, councilmember Tomalchov, alleyways are typically easements. So the property line is corrected where the fence line is, but then you have an adjacent easement that you're responsible for. If a typical alley, six foot, sixteen foot wide, you are responsible for the eight foot that is adjacent to your property. It's the same thing as in front of your property. Your water meter is in public right-of-way, but it's in your landscaping for the most part, but you're responsible for maintaining that area from your front property line up to the back of the curb. That code already exists. This clarifies it and makes it a little bit simpler and more direct. This adds alleys to it, but we already have a code that says you're responsible for the area in front of your property. Now we're just adding the back of your property.
I, I, I think this is really problematic for, for, for property owners. I mean, if, if this happened behind my house and I, and I had nothing to do with it and I got to pay three thousand dollars to clean it up and I have no way to prevent it, and I know we're gating some of the alleyways, but I know there are some neighborhoods that don't want their alleys gated and there's mixed, you know, on the same alley, there's people who want them gated and don't want, I could see this creating a lot of problems for neighbors because then there, this, I, I feel like this is almost forcing the, the people to gate their alleys because there's no other way to prevent this unless you gate the alley. If it's an easement, you can't move your, your property line out into an easement. So I just, I don't know. I don't, this is terrible. I don't know how we prevent it other than gating the alleys, but I know that there are some residents, I think in the Beryl District and even some in the Acatea District, they're adamant both, on both sides. Some really want the alleys gated and some really don't want the alleys gated. And this is putting the city literally right in the middle of it. And I don't know if we even have the, do we have the legal authority to make somebody clean this up in an easement? Because I know, you know, an eas, if somebody drops things in any other public easement, do we go knock on the door and say, hey, this is your responsibility because it's in front of your house? Do we do this anywhere else?
Yes, mayor, members of the council, councilmember Tomalchov, yes, we do. There are easements that run, there are SRP easements that are for irrigation, for example. What's in that easement is responsible, the adjacent property owner is responsible for that. So yeah, we have cited or served notice on property owners that have easements with a variety of trash in it. And, and from what I understand, from right-of-way, and Fred Sanchez is here from right-of-way to answer any questions more specific to that, but a lot of the dumping is happening in alleys that are fenced off.
That are fenced off?
Correct. That already have fences. So they're coming from somebody who lives within that area. The bulk trash collection is supposed to be in, in front of the property. But, and I believe the education process has been very good on that, but there's still continues to be people dumping items in the alley.
Well, one of the problems I see with this, mayor, if I could, is that there could be potential hazardous, I mean, we don't, I don't, I don't know that residents should even be going out and going through this. There could be needles. There could be feces. There could be all kinds of stuff in here if they're, if they're, if they don't know what, where it came from. If somebody's throwing a mattress over the fence, but I mean, what you're looking at here is not, I don't think this is somebody putting their bulk trash out. That doesn't, that's not what it looks like to me in either one of these cases if somebody's putting bulk trash out. It looks like somebody dumped this stuff here, especially the one on the right. I mean, I don't, I don't see how that could be. I mean, I've never seen a bulk trash pile that looked like that. So, and I wouldn't expect, that the city would expect a resident to be able to safely remove that debris because you don't even know what's in there. So, I mean, it could present all kinds of health hazards and, and things like that. So I don't know what the answer is. I just think it's, I just think, you know, I mean, they, they're allowed, can they call in for a special pickup for this? Or do we just, I mean, if this happened behind, like he said, maybe somebody doesn't even know it's back there. I mean, a lot of people don't even go back there that have their, their homes adjacent to alleys. But there's got to be a better way than, than, than charging somebody three thousand dollars to pick up this trash that, at least in these two scenarios, looked to me like that they didn't throw this stuff over the fence. Somebody dumped this there.
Well, mayor, members of the council, councilmember Tomalchov, the city paid the contractor to clean these up. And from right-of-way's perspective, that budget at, at this point, what they've indicated to me will be exhausted by the end of November, early December, the budget for cleaning alleys. When this happens, right-of-way staff calls a contractor and has them come out and clean it. It's just, the point at this, at this juncture is that it's costing the city taxpayer dollars. And those dollars that are allocated for this service are going to run out. So right-of-way wanted us to explore creating an ordinance that mirrors the, our other surrounding cities, Peoria, Surprise, Mesa, Phoenix, they all have ordinances that require people to maintain their half the alley. So we're just exploring that to see how you feel about it.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I was going to point out that gated or not gated on the alley really is not a factor here because this does happen with gated alleys. One of these looks a lot like perhaps a, a renter has moved out and can't take everything with them, but they want to get their deposit back. So they tossed it over the fence or drug it through the grate, the gate or whatever. I'm not inclined to support the ordinance to the extent that it would require a homeowner to clean up something of this scale. Now, if it's a matter of keeping grass in the alley under control or something like that, that would be different for me. But this is a illegal dumping, which is a, a violation of ordinance in itself. And rather, I don't know for sure what the practice would be, but it seems to me that when this is discovered, it should be reported as illegal dumping and there should be an attempt to find who's responsible for it, you know, through mail that might be, you know, left in there, you know, tossed out with, you know, the rest of this paperwork that seems to be in the one on the right, or a, a neighbor who might have witnessed it happening. I think that that's something that we should be trying to prosecute and recover if we need to make our, an adjustment to our right-of-way budget to cover more money for this sort of thing. But I would like to think that through enforcement, we might be able to, you know, camp it down. But I, I can't expect my residents to clean up a mess like this themselves or to pay what it would cost to have it cleaned up. I just don't think that that's fair or reasonable. It just doesn't seem right to me. And I also think that it could be dangerous, as was mentioned. This helps, this would encourage confrontation that perhaps, you know, could end up being dangerous in the middle of the afternoon or worse yet, in the middle of the night. So I don't want to go down that path. Thank you.
A couple of questions that I have for you, and then I've got some more questions on both sides. This situation, you have two different pictures, two different locations. How often does this normally happen in a year's time?
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to defer to Fred Sanchez so he can give you some more specific numbers. And right-of-way is the agency that deals with this situation. He can give you some numbers.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Fred Sanchez. I'm the right-of-way supervisor. What we've been encountering is situations like this. We can clean it up and within weeks, maybe even days, it reoccurs. So the recurrence in some of these heavily- So the recurrence in some of these heavily dumped alleys is what we're really fighting. We've cleaned up one alley since August, maybe three times, going through it. So that's what we're, that's what we're fighting. That's the combat that we have, the recurrence at the same alleys, which happens quite often.
Okay, so, on average, per year?
So we just started the illegal dumping team program, which started in July. We've already gone through nearly 40 illegal dump sites, so we're projecting close to 200 or so illegal dump sites, and many of them, like I say, are reoccurring in the same alleys.
Okay, well, $3,000 each, that's, in my opinion, ridiculously expensive. We have options. First of all, the Glendale Works Program. I don't, I don't know why the city can't coordinate with them, have their labor in a city truck out there to load into a city truck, which could cut that cost, but more importantly, if you're having experiences in the same locations over and over and over, then it's probably a neighbor that doesn't want to make the trip out to the landfill, and it's easier to just go ahead and dump the stuff in the alley.
It could seem that way, sir. Definitely.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't support finding residents for something that they had nothing to do with, but certainly slapping whoever's doing it really hard, if we can figure out who's doing it. Maybe there's a way we could put trail cams up on, on the post, you know, up, up out of reach, where we could figure out who it is, and maybe get a license. Just thinking outside the box a little bit, but you've got certain violators that, that are going to take an opportunity to abuse this, but, but holding our citizens responsible when they have nothing to do with it, and I've heard that, I think, from most of the council, I don't, I don't know if that's the direction that we want to go. You had the question?
Uh, yeah.
Amy does.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, my, my, and I'm glad Mr. Sanchez came up, because as the mayor mentioned on enforcement, those were my questions, were, what is the fine today if you found somebody dumping that? What is the fine for illegal dumping?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Aldama, we don't, we don't pursue the illegal dumping. Michelle Wataneko may be able to answer that.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama, Chapter 18 of the city code, which is garbage and trash, is enforced through the Field Operations Department. And so if we found a pile like this on the right, we're able to determine who it belonged to, we actually charge back the cost of the cleanup back to the resident. Our labor cost is set in that code at $100 an hour, and that's part of our solid waste rates that we do set.
Thank you, Ms. Wataneko. Let me be a little more clear. You find someone illegal dumping in a vehicle, dumps all that, you, your team happens to just catch them. What is the fine to that individual?
The fine is the cost for the, I, it's the cost for the cleanup, and I, and there might be another penalty associated with it, I don't know off the top of my head. I do know we did one last week, so we, we do these.
We need to quadruple that. We need to 20 times that, because that's the only way these people are going to learn. And a lot of times, the alleys are being left open. It's not that people are inviting people, that in itself is an invitation, but people are leaving them open. I've had calls, and the lock is missing, and it stays open, so that's an invitation. However it's happening, we need to be really, really strict on this. And it sounds like if Mr. Sanchez said that there are some alleys that are reoccurring, why aren't we enforcing? Why aren't we going through those alleys daily, weekly? That's the only way we're going to combat this. And then when we catch them, fine the heck out of them. You cannot do that in Glendale, and you cannot do that to residents, and residents don't have $3,000 each time this happens. And it'll happen more than once, because obviously it is, and I know it, because I see it, and I get a lot of calls for these. We, we have to increase the fine, and we have to enforce more and more and more. Thank you for the job you're doing, you're cleaning the community, removing the blight. I appreciate all you're doing. We need more enforcement, and we need to find those who are doing this and fine them severely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of reminds me of the conversation we had about bulk trash, where we, I think we were unanimous in that we, we want to, we want to do something about the bad actors, but we don't want to punish everybody else. And I think that's kind of, to me, that's kind of what this is, is punishing everybody, because there's some bad actors. So I think that the key is to figure out, what, how do we identify the bad actors, and that's who we, that's who we want to punish. And that brings me to, and I don't know what the cost would be, obviously, this is, this is getting into the, eating away at some of the right of way budget for cleaning, cleaning things up, but I don't know if we're doing, if we're, if we've got any of our surveillance cameras tied into anywhere, in any of our alleyways. Even if we just had, you know, a camera, I don't know how many alleyways we have, I don't know how expensive that would be. I know that there's, there, they are places for criminal activity to take place, too, is in alleys also. So I don't know whether that's something that's even being, been considered, is being considered, but there's got to be a way to identify who the bad actors are, and that's who we want to punish, not some homeowner who, because it's close to some other person who has conveniently found a place to get rid of stuff. You know, I mean, we don't, I just don't want to punish, you know, somebody who's struggling to feed their family, when they didn't even do anything wrong. I just, I can't, I can't be comfortable with that. I mean, we all know how expensive everything is right now. This literally could devastate, a $3,000 could devastate a family. They wouldn't be able to pay their, their rent and feed their family that month. I mean, I just don't think we should be even thinking about doing this. And if it's, if it requires us to invest some other money and connect, I mean, obviously the, the cameras are all connected citywide that we do have, and it would only be used if you had to go back and somebody says there's stuff in the alley, do we have, you know, do we have a license plate? Do we have something to identify? Maybe even just license plate readers. Nobody drugged that stuff into the alley. It was brought in there with a vehicle, and license plate readers are probably cheaper than cameras. But I think there's got to be some other way to identify the bad actors, and that's who we want to punish. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got one other question, and, and I don't need Ms. Wataneko to come up, but she said that typically, if the city's cleaning it up, it's $100 per hour, but contractors on this says that they charge $3,000. I don't know how you could get 30 hours of labor in there. I just, I don't even see how that's possible. So do we have two different standards, where the city is charging far less than a corporate rate? Or is the corporate rate just, maybe they're the ones that are dumping the trash, so they got more work? I don't know. That was a joke. But my, but my point is, that's, that just seems terribly expensive. If that's what contractors are charging, if the city can go out and do it with a, you know, one of the tractors and a, and a dump truck, that kind of stuff they could pick up in, in 15 minutes pretty easy. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out where some of these costs are coming from.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I have the invoice for the one that's $3,052. They charged 42 hours of labor at $53 an hour. The dump fee was $764. Tire disposal, 10 tires at $5 each, so that adds up to the $3,052. That's the one on the left.
Mayor?
Yeah, that's just crazy. Crazy.
Yeah. We might want to examine that invoice further. 42 hours would be four people for 10 hours?
I don't see how you can do that.
To clean that up, or 10 people for four hours? That seems like a lot to me. I'm in the wrong business. The, I had a different point to raise, but thank you, Mayor. I think we also ought to look at working with signage, if we have locations that are repetitively dumped in, that we should post them, you know, no dumping, you know, and the potential fine that one could experience from that, and then if it's also under video surveillance, add that to, to, if people are, because we've had a change in bulk trash, you know, some people may not know that what they're doing is all that wrong, but we certainly should let them know prior to doing it, give them a chance to reconsider. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just, just a comment, because I completely do not support this right now, and I know that you are all trying to keep the city clean. I get it, I, this is not personal, I don't think it's you doing it. I, I cannot support it, but what we should be doing is awarding residents for reporting people, and if it becomes prosecutable, reward them. Maybe people will start reporting some more of these illegal, illegal dumping. This needs a comeback. I would not give my consensus for this today. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I, I will ask if there's a consensus. I don't think there is. Is there a consensus?
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great.
So the next one is for interior property inspections. Code compliance does inspections at rental properties when the tenant invites us in, and we'd like to adopt some language from the International Property Maintenance Code that is a little bit better, easier to enforce. And so we've had some instances where cabinet doors, or things on the floor, that type of thing, have some issue that needs to be corrected, but our ordinance isn't, doesn't expand to that. So we'd like to adopt this language from the International Property Maintenance Code. We had 22 cases last year that involved something along these lines.
Anybody?
Mayor? I just want to make sure I understand what the problem is that you're seeing. I, I mean, you described it briefly, can you give me a little more detail of what the problem is you're having in this enforcement?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Malnar, the current code right now just says interior wall and ceiling surfaces. What we need to expand that to is wall cabinets, ceilings, and floors. We've had some floors that were, where the tile was ripping up, and it created tripping hazard. We didn't have that in our code. And then we've had most frequently cabinet, cabinet doors that didn't close properly, and so that created a problem. But our current code didn't allow us to address that, because it didn't say it. But so, then again, the International Property Maintenance Code, where a lot of our codes come from, this is, expands it a little bit more, and allows us to address some of the other issues that we've had to deal with.
If I may, Mayor, so when would you be called in to look at this? Has there, has there been a complaint filed by someone inside the building that would be able to see that? How, how do you know to go in?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Malnar, we only go in on what's invited. We have an interior code for, it's 29.1. Tenants that go to the property managers, and the property managers are non-responsive, and we have this all across the city in a lot of apartment complexes, where the managers don't respond to the residents. So after the, residents have gone through that process, they have the right to call us and invite us into the property. We inspect the property, and whatever violations are there, we serve notice to the property owner and the property managers, and they generally are very good at responding to what we give them a notice to correct.
Okay, thank you. Based on that explanation, I don't have a problem with this. Thank you.
Consensus? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. More codes from the International Property Maintenance Ordinance. We have not been able to address interior doors. The exterior doors, yeah, we have a code for that, but the interior doors, as far as them fitting appropriately and being able to close and lock, we haven't been able to address that. And then also pest, for rodent control and pest control. We, we don't currently have an ordinance that requires property owners or tenants to maintain pest control. A lot of the situations, when we go in, the pest control issue would really be the amount of cleanliness that the tenant is having. So what this does is, this code requires the tenant to also be responsible for pest control at the property.
I thought you were going to keep talking. We're done. Go ahead.
No, Mayor, it, it breaks it down to a single occupancy, multiple occupancy, and the occupant. And again, this is straight out of the International Property Maintenance Code. Other cities that do interior inspections have also adopted this as well.
The interior doors, thank you, Mayor. I don't know, I can't get my page to change now. What, I thought we, we had requirements on interior doors as far as fire breaks and thing, I mean, you have to have a solid corridor between a garage and a, and the interior of the home. Is that, is that a whole different code?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, that, that is a fire code.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that does exist, and that'll be a door that goes from the interior of the structure to an exterior area. This is a, be an interior door like a bedroom door, or bathroom door.
Okay, so this is just basically making sure that the door closes and opens and locks and things like that? Okay, thank you.
And fits.
Consensus?
No.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes all of our recommendations. Appreciate the time and effort.
Okay, very good. City manager report?
Mayor, members of the council, I have three quick items to talk about. First, Tasha Jefferson, she's our code compliance administrator. Recently just received the American Association of Code Enforcement Rising Star Award at the National Conference, and she was awarded this based on a, on her really progressive problem solving, her upward movement through the organization, and her outstanding leadership skills. So just want to join me and, and the organization, and congratulate her for receiving this national award. A project we've been working on, we're, we're now rolling out that we're very excited about, and that's our community alert system. And so anyone in the community now can download the EverBridge app on their smartphone and type in "City of Glendale" or "Glendale Citizen," and, and they can sign up for emergency notifications. We're planning to notify the community of this opportunity through school letters and communication library, library kiosk, water billing, Glendale Connection, billboards at four different locations, and we're also going to be using social media. This is a tool that, you know, is more and more, is, you know, an important tool for a community to have, to get information out, especially under time of crisis. So staff's been working a lot on this, and we're excited that it's finally rolling out. And then finally, most of you went to the grand opening of the Chicken and Pickle facility in Westgate not too long ago. Well, they're having, they're hosting their first National Pickleball League Championship this weekend. Teams are starting to arrive tomorrow. The tournament will run Thursday through Saturday. They have over 108 competitors that will be competing for this, and of course, they're going to be joined by friends and family to kind of watch the competition. They're also hosting a, a community fundraiser to help bring awareness to, to breast cancer, and so they're also kind of giving back to the community as well. So again, just a, kind of a, 10 years ago, we wouldn't have been talking about a pickleball tournament. It's kind of the way things are going, and again, congratulations to Chicken and Pickle for hosting their first national event. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney's report?
No report today, thank you.
Council items of special interest, Councilmember Aldama is not here, Councilmember Hugh? Councilmember Mellor?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, with regard to what Mr. Fels was just talking about, can, can somebody send us a detailed email, so we can include that in our newsletters? Because I looked up the EverBridge app, and there are several different types of EverBridge apps, and I wouldn't know which one to even subscribe to myself. So I appreciate getting some good information that I can share with residents. I'm sure everybody feels the same way. We'd like to share that with our residents in our newsletters. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing today.
Phil, Aldama, you have anything to add? And I have nothing. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion is second, all in favor? Go to I.
Aye.
Any opposed or nay? Motion does pass. We are going into executive session. For adjourned.